We're live and now recording.
Great, Katie, can you do a roll call please?
Sure. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Mr. Golson? Ms. Carrie Nikis?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Eight present, one absent, and no student board reps this evening.
Thanks, Katie. Lord be pleased to me, Saint Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this May 28 meeting of the Whistahicken Board of School Board, excuse me, I'm just trying to open this up here. First, if you look at our agenda, you'll see a list of our prior meetings. We met on April 29 for a work session, on May 6 for a public meeting, and on May 13 for our Finance Committee Budget Workshop. Then we see a list of our upcoming meetings, on June 3, we have a regular public board meeting, and on August 19 is another regular public board meeting. And now jumping to our presentations, we first have our Whistahicken High School Monthly Highlight. Okay, we move back to the next. All right, we're going to jump over that and go to our retiring staff recognition.
All right, that's me. All right, so good evening, I'm very excited for this portion of the evening. Tonight, we're going to honor those that have retired or will be retiring between July 2023 and July 2024. So I'd like to officially welcome our in-person retirees and their guests who will be in the audience tonight cheering them on. We will hear from their principals and supervisors in just a few minutes. But in all, we're celebrating 24 retirees this year in total, and these represent administration, maintenance staff, custodians, special education classroom assistants, teachers, reading specialists, librarians, van drivers, and clerical staff. Collectively, these individuals represent the roles that make our school program successful every day. Each retiree is going to receive a special gift that they were able to choose, and of course, will receive our gratitude for their dedicated years of service to Whistahicken School community. We have a few retirees in person, like I said, but we will introduce all of them in a moment, but first, we'll run the short presentation of all 24. I'd like to give a special thanks to Rochelle Haudeman, who put together that presentation with that really groovy music, that was super fun. I love that addition. And also, it's just been an honor and a pleasure to meet with all the retirees. One of the best parts of my job is obviously hiring people, but also to exit, folks, and you've told me your stories and what you're going to do after retirement, and it's just really been an honor to be a part of that and be a part of that journey with you. So we have a few folks in person this evening, so we're going to get started with that portion. So I would like to invite Dr. Blair and Ms. Marin to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, this is Donna. Donna spent her final laps around the track in her Whistahicken career with us at the high school, and I consider it a privilege and an honor that she did. I never actually asked you if you wanted to, but I'm going to assume that you weren't forced to. She had the opportunity to see some of the same students start their careers in the district and also end their careers in the district, which is a really special opportunity. As our librarian, Donna made every effort to promote a safe space for all of our students in the library. She consistently celebrated different cultures through her author and book showcases. For our AP Seminar and Research Program, she became a go-to expert for all things research. She values the opportunity for students to engage in independent research, and she's been a mentor for a countless number of our students. I had a chance to speak to some of her colleagues in the ELA and Library Departments about what impact Donna had on them as well. Her colleagues shared that they appreciate the passion and time she gave to the students and teachers alike, and they are really grateful for the countless hours she spent showing the teachers how to navigate through vast systems of databases and research processes at the heart of true inquiry-based learning. They also noted that they like her sharp wit. If you know me, I too have enjoyed some of that, and I lean into that. Donna forged a relationship with Gwinnett Mercy University, establishing a community partnership that mutually benefits both institutions. Donna loves her family, and every time she speaks to me about her children and their families, she just glows. I recently learned that her retirement is going to be jam-packed with memory-making with a new baby in the family, who, by the way, will happen to live just a stone's throw away from her house. So I have a feeling she might get sucked into some midnight feedings now that she's retired. Donna, congratulations, I and many others have done greatly this year.
All right, and I'd like to welcome Mrs. Bauer and Ms. Conger up to the podium next.
Good evening, so it is my distinct pleasure this evening to recognize Mrs. Janice Conger. Janice joined the Whistahicken School District in February of 2018 as a librarian at Whistahicken Middle School. Janice was a welcomed addition to WMS, and she immediately embraced the makerspace and library area with many new ideas. She worked very hard to continue to diversify her book collection in the library. Janice was also instrumental in leading our Reading Olympics program and secured authors and illustrators for our annual Authors' Day event. Back in 2020, during the early days of the pandemic, Janice established a drop-off and pickup system that allowed students to continue borrowing books while being at home. Janice also provided online resources for students to access during virtual instruction. Janice was awarded the Pennsylvania Association for Educational Communications and Technologies EROW Davidson Award in 2021. This award honors the outstanding accomplishments of a member of the association in the field of communications in Pennsylvania. She is described as an encouraging mentor and a passionate-driven educator in her nomination for this award. Several times, Janice has been recognized as a Microsoft Innovative Education Expert, and in April 2020, she was named Expert of the Month. Janice keeps herself busy. She's been an MIE expert, MIE trainer, Keystone Technology Innovator, Southeast Regional Board Member for Pennsylvania Association for Educational Communication Technology, co-chair of the Pennsylvania School Library Association Teaching and Learning Committee, and co-moderator of PA Live Chat. If the committee was in need, Janice was always willing to step up. Janice was also a member of both the Scheduling Committee and Discipline Committee while at WMS. In Janice's free time, she likes to be with her grandchildren, volunteering with the Boy Scouts as a den mother for her grandsons. Janice also enjoys teaching them how to code. Janice is a die-hard Syracuse fan and thoroughly enjoys watching Syracuse basketball games. Although Janice's time at WMS was brief compared to many that retire here, her mark in the middle school community will not go unnoticed. Janice, I wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
All right, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Biaka up to the podium, and I know you have three, so I'm going to let you choose your order. Yeah.
So we're recognizing three retirees from Shady Grove today, and when I wrote my speeches for all three, there was a quality or characteristic about each of them that stood out to me, so I based my speeches on that. And their qualities are characteristics, but I also consider them gifts, that you've given to me and things that I want to take forward. So Pat Farrell, we all know the importance of being in a part of a community. Sometimes a person becomes so associated with the place that their name becomes synonymous with that place. When people think Pat Farrell, they think Shady Grove. Similarly, when they think Shady Grove, they think Pat Farrell.
It's not Farrah Elementary?
We're changing it, there's a dedication ceremony in the fall. Those two names are always going to be connected, and largely, I think that's because Pat has viewed her role as being a part of a community, and being a teacher was only a part of that role. For Pat, her interest in her students went well beyond the classroom walls. In fact, if you're trying to find Pat on a Saturday, I can tell you exactly where she's going to be. One, she could be at Wentz Run Park, watching her students play a softball game. Two, she could be back at Shady Grove on the fields behind the school, watching a soccer tournament. Three, I went on a limb on this one, she could be in Fort Washington, watching her students perform in a School of Rock concert. No matter what, Pat has always made it a priority to see her students in the community, not just the classroom. In fact, I don't think I've ever attended a Shady Grove event and not seen Pat there. People often ask me if I have to go to a lot of school events as a building principal, and I say yes, but not as many as Pat Farrell does. You'll always hear Pat talk about her 5F family, and Pat truly did see students and all the children and staff who walked the halls of Shady Grove as family. She served as an official and unofficial mentor to countless staff members, some sitting in the audience tonight. And as Pat embarks on this new chapter of her life, I'm filled with gratitude for the countless ways she's touched the lives of her students and colleagues and how she's demonstrated the importance of community. Even though it's the end of Pat's journey as an educator in the building, she's always going to be a part of Shady Grove. In fact, she lives directly across the street.
Sorry.
So congratulations, Pat. I'm honored I had the opportunity to be a part of the 5F family and to close out your incredible career. If you get a gift. And if I could please welcome Lisa Hacking. So versatile was the word I was thinking of. To be versatile, you have an ability to adapt to ever-changing conditions, and that's the word that comes to mind when I see Lisa. I had the pleasure of working at least in two different buildings, at Whistahicken High School and at Shady Grove. And as everybody knows, there's not many differences between an elementary-age student and a high school student. Read that incorrectly. As everyone knows, there are many differences between an elementary-age student and a high school student. So how does someone in their career navigate between working with and supporting those two very different groups of kids? Well, take someone who's versatile, who's able to work with both kindergarteners who are learning the foundations of reading, high school students who are working on applying jobs for a post-secondary career. And I personally observed Lisa navigate both of those. While there have been many differences in the students, there's not necessarily differences in the staff members who are successful in working with those students. Lisa's one of those staff members. Starts because Lisa's grounded in an ethic of care. She cares deeply about the success of her students academically, socially, and emotionally. In addition, that level of care, Lisa is very patient. She supports students, recognizing learning as a process, and she helps them to understand that even when they're having difficulty. And she's also shown that she can form a connection with just about anybody she meets. Support staff members are often part of a team. They work with other faculty and staff to ensure the success of a program. As a PACE, formerly known as Autistic Support Assistant at Shady Grove, Lisa was an ultimate team member. She supported not only the students in the program, but other staff members. There were no challenges that Lisa couldn't meet, and she was always there to ensure that her colleagues were supported. For Lisa, it's always been about serving others, helping others to feel good about who they are and the work they've done. And if someone was struggling, Lisa was always there with the word of encouragement. Lisa, your ability to connect with everyone, adapt to many different situations is a quality I admire and strive to replicate. Congratulations, and thank you for your years of service to the students and staff members at Wes. And I would like to invite Ken Wolfe, please. So Ken, perseverance was the word that came to mind when I was thinking about you. Actually, there's two words, it was perseverance and fishing. For those of you that don't know Ken, he's an avid fisherman. Before my first year at Shady Grove, when I came in 2019, in order to get to know the staff members better, I asked for them each to send me a picture of what they did in the summer. And Ken's picture is burned in my brain, I can still see it. He's standing in the middle of a stream, holding a two-foot, three-foot rainbow trout, about this big, which is pure elation on his face. And when you come to think about it, a fisherman must have perseverance. They need to have patience, need to deal with frustration, and they can't give up after casting the line one time. Perseverance is the continued effort to do or achieve something despite difficulties, failure, or opposition. No one I know has demonstrated this skill more in the past few years than Ken Wolfe. Teaching's a challenging career, and each day, every teacher faces some type of difficulty. Usually, that difficulty is related to the job itself. Sometimes, however, that difficulty can stem from challenges that life throws our way outside of school. Ken's last year is at Shady Grove, he persevered through pandemic as well as some medical issues. And I don't think just anyone could have persevered through all of that. Ken faced obstacles head-on, never allowing setbacks to deter him from his mission of working with children. Whether it was navigating changes in the education landscape or adapting to unforeseen circumstances, Ken's always risen to the occasion with grace and resilience. I want to thank Ken for his years of service to Whistahicken, specifically to Shady Grove. Thank you for being a role model of perseverance for us all, and I hope wherever the road or stream takes you, it's full of rest, relaxation, and plenty of rainbow trout.
Right now, Ms. Sadowski, you can come up, so. I want to say thank you to Ms. Sadowski for coming up. She is standing in for Ms. Washam, who was unable to attend tonight, so we really appreciate you being here and honoring.
I'm honored to be here. So same thing, whatever order?
Whatever order you'd like.
All right, Karen. Come on up. These are Mrs. Washams or Stephanie Washam's words, I'm just reading them for her, I'm the builder. Karen Ciccio has been an integral part of the Stony Creek community for many years. She is always there to help students, support staff, and encourage others to be their best. Whether it was her delicious baked goods, great school spirit, or her ability to make every child feel like they could accomplish anything, Karen left a profound impact on Stony Creek. We are so grateful for the skill and knowledge she shared with us at Wes over the last 28 years. So thank you. Okay, Sonia. Sonia St. Jules. Sonia St. Jules has fostered and supported the growth of the Strings Program over the years. Her unparalleled love of music shows through her interactions with students and families. She has worked throughout the Whistahicken community and spread her passion for the orchestra to many others. Congratulations on your retiring. And Patty Fitzgerald. Patty Fitzgerald has always focused on strong connections and relationships with her students and families. Staff always appreciated her support and resourcefulness as a teacher. She worked collaboratively with others and created engaging and interactive lessons for her students and other students. Patty's love of teaching and focus on growth inspired those around her. And I just want to say, resilience is a word that describes Patty. Patty has had a lot that she has overcome, and this next journey is your best one. All right. And I think we have just one more. Oh, Dr. Chrisfield.
So Wade Coleman. Two words have the ability to strike fear in so many people. Hold on, Beth, weren't you going to say a few words or anything? No, okay, I'll take it from here. Imagine if you were a vendor, you tried to short ship us something or stick in some sort of clause that district unfriendly, I would not want to be that poor soul. Imagine if you were a contractor on a big job, tried to suggest there was a need for a change order, only to face Mr. Coleman in a job meeting. Uh-uh. Nope, you don't do that again. Imagine if you were an upper Dublin taxpayer. Oh. Wow, the fear of that, what? I wasn't supposed to say that part? Oh, sorry, I retract that part. And many other people who shall remain nameless to protect the innocent. No, in all seriousness, HR told me that I can't have this be a roast tonight. That's for another reason, okay, well, and it's very good career advice to do what HR says, so I won't follow that path. I will maybe say that HR, somebody at one point said sometime recently, this was Wade's last birthday, and we looked like, what? No, 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 not last birthday, period, just last birthday as a member here, so we had to celebrate it. So every now and then, you know, there is some roasting going on. In all seriousness, though, Wade's career in public education has spanned 30 years, 15 of which was here in West Nation. And his track record as a business administrator speaks for itself. I've been in this profession 30-plus years. And I can tell you that I've never come across a more skilled, a more professional, and a more effective business administrator in my entire career. And by the way, that includes me, I was a BA for a while, but the bar is a lot higher than that, believe me. That's the thing that's on the surface, and we see that, all of you can see that, but you may not see some other things, it's not readily available to the public eye. For example, Wade is one of the most generous people we'll all come across, both with his time. It's not uncommon to see him driving a van around the district, no one else does that if I've come across it in our level, and also with his own resources, always quick to throw a pizza party, do something for his staff. So that's behind the scenes, and also his loyalty as a teammate, as a member of the cabinet, and as a direct report. So Wade, I'm giving your parents all the credit for this, they did a nice job in the last two. I'll give you the credit for honing your skills, your math skills, your auditing skills prior to coming to us, and then doing all the great things that you've done here, but they get the credit. And the combination of those things, above the surface and below the surface, make for an incredible team member, direct report, and just general friend. So congratulations and thank you.
Well, why don't we give all our retirees a great round of applause? Now, we always say you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to go, now's your opportunity to have some refreshments in the lobby.
Before a picture, though.
Oh, and we'll get a picture?
Yeah.
In the lobby? Or do you guys want to do board members?
Can we do one in here?
Sure. You're the boss. So why don't we have our retirees with their...
Yeah, let's get some board members and the retirees for a picture.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah. We'll see everybody run out.
Where would you like to do this, over here? Okay. All right, now you're welcome to gather in the lobby and have some refreshments and enjoy your time with your principal, supervisor, and your colleagues.
All right. We will move on. Next, under Presentations, we have our Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month recognition. Can you, Dr. Wong? Oh, it's the door. Yes, we're great.
Oh, Ms. Latour, yes, we're grateful to have Ms. Latour with us this evening, thank you so much for joining, Ms. Latour.
Thank you so much for having me this evening, good evening everyone, thank you for the opportunity to present. May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are a diverse group of people who come from almost fifty different countries with backgrounds spanning more than one hundred languages and dialects. We recognize the need for our curriculum to include AAPI heritage and history in our country all throughout the course of our school year. This is also reflected in our professional development, such as the January PD that we held on the Model Minority Month. In May, we asked principals to share information about how their schools respectively recognized and honored Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. This presentation will highlight just a few examples from each of our schools. So at Blue Bell Elementary, our third grade students had the opportunity to have a visit from our high school readers who came to them to share stories and to also discuss the upcoming Asian Cultural Fair. We had also an opportunity to reach out to WIS families who are Korean American who came in to teach us about Korean culture and heritage, and so the students had a wonderful opportunity to learn how to write their name in Korean, decorate their very own handbands, learn greetings in Korean and play traditional Korean instruments. Additionally, at Blue Bell Elementary, if you go there to visit, there is a prominent AAPI bulletin board on display. For Lower Gwinnett Elementary School, something that you'll see as a common theme will be our ASA, our Asian Student Association from the high school, our high school Indian Cultural Association and our middle school Asian Student Association participated in celebrating AAPI Month this year by promoting diversity and cultural awareness through storytelling. The event served as a wonderful opportunity for Lower Gwinnett students to connect and learn from one another, as well as the high school and middle school students. For Shady Grove Elementary in kindergarten, students learned about the history of the cherry blossom trees in Washington DC, which were a gift from Japan to the United States to celebrate their friendship. Students created their own cherry blossom trees, as you can see in the photograph. Our fourth grade students learned about dragons in Asian culture, as well as the difference between an Asian dragon and a European dragon. Students then worked with clay to create their own dragons and created sketches, which will be featured, of course, in the Shady Grove's art show this month. Our first grade students read several texts by Asian American authors. And then students then made connections between the themes of the stories that they read and their own families and cultures. For Stony Creek Elementary School, again, we had an opportunity to explore art and so our kindergarten students created paintings inspired by Japanese artist Hokusai's Great Wave painting. Kindergarten is connecting this particular celebration with their social studies unit long ago and today by looking at contemporary Japanese American artists to see if they can find similarities in their artwork. For our students who are in first grade, they had the opportunity once again to leverage literature, so they were reading various books, such as The Eyes That Kiss in the Corner and The Empty Pot. And this was appropriate for them to help explore some of the problems that they see in some of the storylines, trying to figure out connections with characters, AAPI culture, contrasting them to each other. So very much an opportunity once again for our high school students, which is a common theme, to visit our elementary classes during AAPI History Month. Additionally, we had an opportunity during math for students to solve puzzles using tangrams, which is an old Chinese puzzle. The pictures for our middle school again highlight the wonderful efforts of our Asian Student Association from the middle school and high school, as well as our High School Indian Cultural Association, which visited the four elementary schools for their annual AAPI Read Aloud in honor of AAPI Heritage Month. Students read books with AAPI protagonists, authors and illustrators to celebrate the diversity of the culture, heritage and stories. They also, in terms of our middle school library, had a wonderful display across the district. As you can see, there is this emphasis on leveraging literature to explore diversity and inclusion. During this month at Wissahican Middle School, our eighth grade art students, as you can see in that upper right picture in that corner, they completed a mixed media collage unit inspired by the Japanese principle of design and Noten, meaning light and dark, and the harmony and balance between positive and negative space within a composition. Students also had the opportunity to look at Asian, Asian American and Pacific Islander artists. And with this opportunity, they were able to then to draw inspiration for their mixed media collage that they created themselves. And then students in seventh grade math class had an opportunity to research famous mathematicians. At our high school level, Mrs. Founds had a course entitled Dance Fusion Class, which provided a guest speaker to provide students with several Garba dances. Garbo is a celebratory dance that originated in India and is mainly performed at festivals and other special occasions. So during the Founds Dance Fusion Class, students were able to really get into the mood and do Garba dancing. In Mr. Smith's Global Two classes, students read a comic anthology from AAPI creators who wrote about an important object in their lives that best represent who they are as a person. Each student read a different comic and discussed how seemingly ordinary objects can represent profound stories of culture and humanity. Students then chose an object that best represented who they are and created a four-panel comic to tell their own story. Through their efforts, again, they were able to really dive into meaningful takes from their own origin of that object that they selected. And these objects range from teacups, rice sculptures, to horse bikes, pocket watch and fridge base. In one of our pictures above, you'll see that we have our Trouble Choir performing, this is Wissahican's Trouble Choir singing in Mandarin for the Spring Choral Concert. And with all of these, again, what we want to emphasize is throughout each class, there is an emphasis on the learning that's taking place within the classroom curriculum. We were lucky to have once again our May eighteenth Third Annual Asian Cultural Fair, which was held at the high school. Participants engaged in various activities that were representative of different countries. There were also several performances throughout the event that ranged from K-pop dance to spoken word, to traditional Chinese and Korean dances. And so I had the opportunity to take some of these pictures and join the event at our Third Annual Asian Cultural Fair. Our students and staff did a phenomenal job of hosting and showcasing the wonderful efforts that are happening in Wissahican School District. Part of our Asian Cultural Fair again was making sure that at the high school, we had an opportunity to showcase the wonderful things that our affinity spaces and groups are creating and collaborating on with our sponsors at both the middle school and high school level. Additionally, what's so very important is how we're centering Asian American Pacific Islanders in our curriculum and also in the learnings that our staff members are undergoing in our district. So thank you so much for this opportunity, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Great, thank you so much for that presentation. Any questions or comments? No?
Nothing specific, I just love these updates and thank you for coming in and sharing this with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, well then we'll move on, thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Alright, then we're at our first public comment period, we have no one registered person, two people online. Alright, then I will share these instructions. We allow maximum five speakers to be heard on the same topic, please limit comments to three minutes. Note that it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses online on board docs. When speaking, please state your name and your municipality of residence, as well as the topic on which you're speaking. This first public comment period is for agenda items only. Who's our first speaker?
Carmina Taylor.
Okay, Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So this morning I received a text from a high school parent that has a special ed student and having a very difficult time coming to terms with the district and finding the right place for her son to be at besides the high school.
Carmina, which agenda item is it related to?
Oh, the item number ten.
Okay, thank you.
And so when I saw item number ten on the agenda, it really, really brought to mind, and this is my question to be answered, how much money has the district spent in the last nine years on education settlements versus the last five years that Judith was superintendent for educational settlements? I think that's pretty significant, the last time I did a right-to-know request, it was for a five-year period and there was like more than a fifteen percent increase in how much is being spent. And black parents in particular don't know how to navigate their rights adequately to get the type of settlements or the proper education alternative for their kids as some of the white parents in the district. So I think that's a very important question to ask, again, how much was spent by the district the last five years of Judith's tenure and the last nine years of Dr. Cressfield's tenure? And then I remember about four or five years ago, there was a special education audit and I did another right-to-know request asking what were some of the outcomes of the seven recommendations that were made? I would like to know, again, an update on the recommendations that were made at the last audit and when is there another audit to be done at the district level? And lastly, I would just like to say that I've gone back and forth in emails and with Dr. Cressfield about allowing parents to allow me to be their advocates. And there was a situation earlier this year that he would not allow me to help a parent that specifically asked me to help them and he utilized the whole special education rule. And so it's ironic that he's also not allowing the high school staff to communicate with me as the parent has suggested with a child with an IEP. So I pose this last proposition to you guys as school board members, how long are you going to continue to allow what's going on in terms of leadership at the central administration? The money that's being spent for special ed, the feedback, the recommendations you've gotten from special education audits? I mean, at this point, both black and white parents have a difficulty with the special education program at Wissahican and the black boys once again are being hurt the most. So I hope on record, all my questions will be answered in your proper order, thank you.
Thank you, Carmina. Katie, who's next?
Next up, we have SS, that's the name that appears in the panelist list.
Okay, SS, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. SS? Okay, sorry, anyone else?
There are no other raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, maybe we'll come back to that person second time. Alright, we'll move on then to the board president report, I have a number of items to review that we'll be voting on next week. First is approval of resolution W three twenty-four, the final budget of the school district for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. On Form PDE twenty twenty-eight, as presented to the school board with revenues and expenditures of one hundred twenty-seven million, six hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred forty dollars. That's seven point one. Seven point two is approval of resolution W four twenty-four, the twenty-four, twenty-five annual tax levy, setting a real estate tax, enacting an interim real estate tax, utility realty tax, tax due date, delinquent status, discount and penalties, severability and continuation of other taxes. Seven point three, the approval of resolution W five twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, Wissahican Property Tax and Rebate Program for certain senior citizens, widows and widowers, disabled persons with fixed and limited incomes, establishing uniform standards and qualifications for eligibility to receive a rebate. Seven point four is approval of resolution W six twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, homestead and farmstead exclusion. Seven point five, the approval of resolution W seven twenty-four, the continuance of real estate tax installment payment plan for approval of homestead and farmstead property real estate tax. Seven point six, approval of resolution W eight twenty-four, designating the Wissahican Valley Public Library to be the municipality's agency for library services and enacting a special tax of three hundred fifty-two thousand mills under the authority of the Pennsylvania Library Code. The budget requires a three percent increase in real estate tax millage. Seven point seven, in connection with the financial function of the school district, is in the best interest of the district to authorize the business administrator the ability to carry out certain fixed obligations and financial investments, both honorably and legally, with a subsequent ratification for such actions confirmed by specific board action. Seven point eight, that our present general policy of authorization to the business administrator for the investments, purchases and expenditures be extended to include such other fixed school district obligations as would enable the business administrator to meet properly and possible economies fixed or regular obligations of the district effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Seven point nine, in order to effect the most efficient and economical use of the monies of the school district in the best interest of the taxpayers, is recommended that the business administrator be authorized to make payments within the vendor's stated terms of payment and to make payments within the stated period of invoice discount in order to accomplish this. And wait, these seem like a lot of things that we're just approving for you to be able to take certain actions, correct? Okay, so seven point ten is authorizing you to make payments without our approval. First, having been secured amounts owing under any contracts which have been previously approved by us. Seven point eleven looks like for you to be able to solicit bids, sorry, I'm just kind of kind of long here, seven point twelve, budget transfer, that's our budget transfer that we do every year, and seven point one three. It looks like allowing you to approve change orders up to ten thousand dollars, correct? So these are all of our budget-related items.
Yes, these are all, these are all items, they're actually the exact same that we had discussed at the budget workshop, the last budget workshop and pretty much other than the numbers changing, they're the same motions that we would have every single year.
Okay, and the tax increase that's included was what amount?
Do you want me to explain the tax increase?
Yeah, could you just go over the numbers with everybody, just so everybody's clear on what they're voting on?
Yep, so the tax increase is four point eight seven percent, it includes significant special education support, including PACE assistance, speech, BCBA. There was the conversion of four individuals to assistant principals for the elementary school and also the board supporting, which is tremendous, the continuing increase to the capital projects reserved by two hundred thousand dollars. So those were some of the significant items that are contained within the first motion with the tax increase. This, you know, the tax increase will continue to have us be the second lowest in Montgomery County. So, you know, again, it's the culmination of many, many meetings and many discussions about what should and should not be in the budget.
And I would note for those that have come to our meetings over the past couple of weeks, that after discussion at our budget workshops, it was decided among the board members that we would include the Strings Program.
That is correct.
That was something that was considered to remove from the budget, but we have opted to continue that third grade Strings Program.
That is correct.
So that is remaining in there.
That is in the budget.
Alright. Any other questions among board members, Steve?
Yeah, and just Wade, if you could explain the state allowed tax increase compared to what the board agreed to.
Sure, the Act One index is five point three percent, so any tax increase up to five point three percent would be allowed. Our tax increase is four point eight seven.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Alright. So I know we talked a little bit about seven point four at our finance meeting about how do we get more folks to appreciate and understand this program and the benefit it has to our community? So perhaps something that we could pull into a communications kind of effort, but I do feel like there might be some misnomers or misinformation about the value of such program and we should probably put some emphasis around that. Same thing with seven point three, do we publicize that program heavily? Which is the rebate for the renters and the senior citizens, excuse me if I'm calling it incorrectly. The rebate program for the Wissahican property tax for certain senior citizens, widows, widowers and disabled persons with fixed and limited income. And disabled persons with fixed and limited income. Um, is this something that is? Well known, like, do we feel like people who would qualify for this are actually leveraging this program?
So so um, thank you very much for both of those questions. So um, seven point three, which is the um, property tax rebate. I think it has um, gained steam. Um, Bethelaria, who was in attendance earlier, and we discussed it one of our uh, budget meetings. She's the person who actually goes through all the paperwork. She's incredibly nice and incredibly helpful. So even when there's questions, we work through whoever calls to, you know, make sure that they're able to uh, get the tax rebate. Um, so you know, once having success, I think people talk about it more. Those people certainly apply for it year after year. Um, I think we can always do a better job in the communications that we send out. We can always include a little blurb about it. Uh, that along with um, the um, the um, homestead, farmstead exclusion you had mentioned trying to um, or maybe it was Steve, but I think it was you. Uh, had mentioned trying to promote it. And I did look it up, the one of the um. One of the advertisements would be that the average homestead is four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So. It certainly seems like um, an incentive to fill out the paperwork. It's quite a bit of money. And it is available uh, for all of the homesteads and the uh, one farmstead that we have that applied as well. Uh, so in any case, I think we can continue to do that. The tax collectors themselves are certainly aware of the programs. Um, and include um, normally on the back of the tax bill, a little promotion of the program as well. Uh, so certainly, we're trying, always can do more.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know, we talked about that at the finance meeting. I mean, how many of us actually open those letters? I'm not good at that, but uh, since our house librarian is here. Maybe we could use the library to kind of help with that awareness. Since seven point six directly impacts her, but. But yeah, no, I think we probably as a community can kind of think about what can we do to help promote? These are great programs and I mean, it doesn't harm anyone to use them. It actually helps everybody.
All right, thank you. A lot of work here.
Let me ask a question about those real quick. For the home, the homestead, farmstead, it's a one-time application and then it's like for. For good, right? Or do you have to do it every year?
So uh. Joyce, it it is more or less uh, permanent. So I believe that there, when the house sale uh, a house sale occurs. I believe you have to reenact it, but while you're there, I believe it continues. There could always be a change in law, but I don't think you have to fill out the paperwork twice.
But then for seven point three, for the senior citizens, they have to reapply every year to prove their income is less than what we're.
Right, because it's um, it is a series of hurdles and they could change year to year as opposed to the homestead. The assumption is you continue to own your home.
Ms. Frank, do we have those forms available at the library for those exclusions?
Currently, I know I can't.
Right, but I wonder if we could get some at the libraries because I feel like that would target the community greater than who we can reach with our emails. For the district as well.
Wonderful. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Any other comments? I would just note again, I think we've mentioned it a couple of times and Wade noted at the outset, like this is the result of several months of meetings. You can see Wade's humongous binder there as he's speaking. We have worked our way through that over several months.
And that's just answering board questions. There's a, there's a whole nother one with my work.
But we we've met for hours and these are open to the public. So anyone is welcome to come. And listen in on these meetings as we discuss the budget in depth for weeks. Um. Uh, so this is not something we just came up with. So I just want to make sure that's clear to anyone listening to this meeting. That we do spend a significant amount of time working on this budget. Um, so if there's no other comments that.
One, one thing I will add about over the course of many month period, going back to when we uh, first were presented a preliminary budget for the next year. Uh, based on, you know, where the district was at, our expected increases in expenditures, our continued enrollment growth, increased needs in special ed. Uh, a number of different things we wanted to do to continue to further improve the educational offerings here at the district, so on and so forth. We were looking at a preliminary cut of the budget that was going to require a five point three percent tax increase. So over the course of essentially five or six months through many meetings as Amy referenced. Um, we had a bunch of debates and discussions going back and forth. Things that we could potentially cut uh, in order to add some new things uh, and vice versa. Um, and through that back and forth, which included the preservation of. The third grade strings program, which at one point we contemplated um, eliminating to make the budget numbers all work. Uh, we ended up at a number of four point eight seven percent, which is a significant notch below the five point three that we started with. So. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, and in the end, we were able to squeeze things down further. Um, like no tax increase obviously is uh, is looked at favorably or is a is a positive thing, but. In order to continue to invest in the quality of education in Wissahicken and. And fund the initiatives and programs that we know are so so needed by our school community. Um, I'm glad that we're able to come together on a, a school tax increase for next year that is um, a good bit below the maximum that was allowed to us by law. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, Joe, um, I agree with what you said. I I also think it's it's important to recognize that this is a high tax increase. And none of us necessarily like wanted that high. I think we all would have preferred lower as we're taxpayers ourselves in this district. Um, but I think it's important to recognize that costs have increased across the board and the and the school district is no different. And so I think, you know, you can look at this number and say, how dare the school board raise the taxes this much? Well, when you're going to look at other districts, you're going to see very similar numbers, I think, across the board. And like you said, it's it was months of discussion and work and. Um, if anyone has an issue with it, I would would encourage them to come to the the budget sessions next year because I think it's important to hear. You know, what the school needs and how we arrive at that number. And once you're sitting on those meetings, it becomes much more clear. Um, you know, what is needed, and I just think that's an important perspective to have.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? All right, um, then the last agenda item uh, under my report. Um, next week we'll be approving and appointing our student board representatives. So earlier this evening, we did interview. Uh, potential representatives. Um, we'll be notifying them this week. And then next week we'll fill in those blanks and we'll be voting on them next week. So we won't announce it quite yet. Um, so that is my report for this evening and we'll move on now to our superintendent report.
Thank you. Uh, no action items tonight. I do have a couple uh, things to report on that happened recently and both of which pertain to. Students we have who may um, be experiencing some real difficulties uh, outside of school. Um. And I'm very proud of our efforts to help them along with uh, their school piece of their life. The first is uh, a program is called Gateway to College. You may be familiar with that. Uh, districts partner up with the Montgomery County Community College. And this is for older high school students who have either already dropped out or essentially about ready to drop out. And Lord, almost always due to some some really trying circumstances in their personal life. And so rather than them dropping out, um, they are admitted to this program. It's staffed by uh, community college uh. Uh, teachers and professors and also administrators. And we recently had a graduation ceremony at the community college where five of our students. Um, amongst probably about thirty or so from all the districts combined. Um, were proudly marched up on stage as graduates with, by the way, a handful of community college credits depending on the on the student. And the look of of uh, joy and gratitude and relief on the on the part of the family members, forget about the graduates. Was is this really very um, uh, fulfilling. So. That's a credit to our high school staff who gets these students. Back on our radar into the community college program and gateway staff takes it from there and they're they're amazing. So. That's not, they don't necessarily need any public recognition. They probably prefer to have it otherwise, but. Um, I just wanted to point out that those are, that's something we do for students who really need a helping hand. And similarly, we recently went through, the district went through a monitoring, uh, annual monitoring for the feds on the. McKinney Vento homelessness program. Which, as you may know, all districts have to have uh, procedures in place for students and families who end up being homeless for one reason or another. And we have a program in place and uh, our audit came back with a score of seventy out of seventy. And that is a rather incredible accomplishment. And I've seen firsthand, as has Dr. Dewan. Our home and school visitor, whose name is uh, Kevin Witchy. And that's seventy out of seventy is lar- is largely due to his personal touch. And we, districts will get a high enough score probably, hopefully. We aced it and that's because you see Kevin personally arranging for um, living quarters, transportation. I see him getting donations of gas cards and and putting them in the hands of families who need it. And so kudos to Mr. Witchy and uh, all the things we do to make sure that those families and students, who certainly need a helping hand, get it.
Well, what uplifting news, Jim. Thank you for sharing that. Any comments? Debbie?
Thanks for sharing that and please uh, tell um, I lost his name already, Kevin. Kevin, uh, thank you from us. That has to be a huge undertaking for one person and. Must have like a toll on on him as well. But it's also wonderful that we have someone like that in our community. So that makes my heart sing. So thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you again. Assistant superintendent report?
Good evening. I don't have any informational items or action items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Uh, for next week's um, meeting, I have three items to be voted on. First one is approval of a settlement agreement between a family and the district. Um, the redacted agreement is obviously available for the board. And it's a settlement in an amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. We also have another settlement agreement between the district and a family that the board also has a copy of the redacted agreement. Um, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And the third item to be voted on would be approval to hire A.M. Amy Brooks Esquire of Whistler Perlstein. To serve as a hearing officer for an employee. A former employee matter versus the school district in an amount not to exceed nine thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you again. Board secretary report, Wade?
Yes, thank you. Um, at the next meeting, we'll be requesting approval of the April twenty-ninth work session meeting. Minutes and then May sixth, um, regular public board meeting minutes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Uh, board treasurer report?
Thank you. Uh, at the next meeting, we'll be requesting approval and acceptance of the minuting of the treasurer's report for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, human resources report?
All right, good evening again. Uh, for your re- review tonight are nine items under section thirteen of the human resources report. The first four action items include retirements, appointments, summer guidance hours. Changes of status, leaves of absences, extracurricular changes, E S Y appointments, fall extracurricular appointments and volunteer additions. Item five is a revised job description. Item six is an M O U between the district and the W A concerning some serious classroom injuries to staff. Item seven is the renewal of the confidential employee agreement. And items eight and nine include the annual uh, standard amendments to the assistant superintendent and H R director's employment contracts. This concludes my report and I'll take any questions.
Debbie?
I have a question, Danielle. Sorry, I didn't email about this earlier. Um. I know that there were three teachers at Laura Gwinnett who actually got their doctorates this past, I think, week. Miss Apple and Miss Beck and Miss Murphy, Dr. Apple, Dr. Beck, Dr. Murphy. And I just wanted to shout out and say congratulations to them. I don't know if that shows up later in the year or for next year, maybe.
So you'll see um, when they receive their doctorate, then they can move on column on the salary schedule. So. Um, they have already sent me their transcripts uh, to prepare for that, that and they aren't even due until uh, September first, so.
They're on it.
Yes, they are on top of it and they should be. It's an incredible accomplishment and um, yeah, so you'll be seeing that uh, in the probably the August agenda.
Awesome, thank you.
That's good.
Debbie?
Um, two questions. Um, and I'll pause after each one. So. What, I'm confused by thirteen point six. What what does that exactly entail? I tried to read through it, but I I don't think I have the right context. It's the memorandum of understanding between um, WIS and W E A.
Sure. Um, so recently and especially this year, there have been more classroom incidents. Um, I'm not, I'm sure that's not going to come as any surprise because we hear it. Um, from all all angles, right? Um, and so there's been more incidents of um, things happening in the classroom. And and particularly um, to this M O U, um, things happening from student to staff member and staff members becoming injured. Um, workers comp's very complicated, so I'm going to spare you those details, but. Um, when someone is only out for, you know, a short period of time um, because of an injury. Uh, and they're going through the proper channels, they file the report, they have a workers comp doctor. Um, and during the typical timeframe, if they're only out, you know, a few days, they have to use their own sick time. So that feels really awful to them, obviously, you know, after being in a classroom, maybe really trying to assist students that that maybe be ha- having behaviors or. Um, extreme aggression in in certain moments, um, and they end up getting injured. So. It's very specific, um, the type of injury in which this would um, this would cover, but it would cover our W E A um. Uh, members uh, for two days of that timeframe in which they would get paid. So the day of the injury and then two additional days that they wouldn't have to use their own sick time.
Okay, that makes total sense. Sorry, I think I needed that context. And then um, I wanted to circle back on thirteen point three, which is the extracurricular sports. And I know we talked about this earlier this year and we said that we weren't going to make any changes to um, our coach evaluations midstream. But considering this is now looking into next year, I did want to have like a a re uh, opportunity to. Uh, see what we're going to be doing for evaluations for our uh, sports coaches. Um, especially, and we talked at length, I know um, at an earlier meeting about having. Blinded or, you know, confidential evaluations for our coaches from our students. So. Wanted to make sure that we brought that up because it still seems to be a. A thing that is. Probably required. For our our, for that aspect of our community.
Yes, we've had uh, uh, talks with the high school administration. Obviously, there's been some transition. Uh, so bringing uh, Dr. Blair into the mix on some of the discussions and research that we have done uh, to see what other districts have been doing. So all of those things have taken place. Um, so we do have some ideas, uh, and we have had some discussion um, to include Dr. Um. Uh, Dr. Blair uh, in that and summer is a really good time to do those things when things settle down just a little bit more. Um, I will also um, reiterate to you and the public that um, that. If there is something of a concern that a parent or student or an athlete has. That um, they follow the the chain of command and they go, you know, directly to um, the coach if they if they feel comfortable. If not the coach, then they go to the principal or the athletic director. Um, and you know, the office of H R is always available as well for any. Um, you know, staff, staff matters. Um, it's really important that those things get reported properly. Um, anonymous advice is not. Or information is not very helpful because it doesn't allow us to do our jobs. It doesn't allow us to investigate properly. It doesn't allow us to get the get the right information so we can do something about. Um, you know, the concerns or the issues that people might have. So I would encourage anyone to come forward with that um, and and use the chain of command up into my office, so.
Yeah, and like, I don't want to belabor this, but I and I did talk to Dr. Blair about this. I don't think we've created an environment where our athletes feel safe and not to come forward. So one of the things that I've asked that we look into is how do we help our athletes feel? Safe raising concerns. So I think we need to instill that kind of community and. Like, when I mean safe, kids are worried about playtimes. Let's be clear, they're not, they're not worried about, you know, any, but they're afraid if they say something, they're going to be pulled off from playing. And they don't want that. So we just need to find an environment where. You know, athletes can say something and they're not going to be jeopardized for speaking up because that's not. that's not the environment that is going to create the best sense of belonging, honestly. So for that a- and and when I mean anonymous kind of evaluations, like you know, our teachers are constantly being evaluated by a number of different tools. Our our at our coaches are just evaluated with, you know, an observation and how perhaps the team is performing, which isn't even fair. Like there has to be a vehicle where the student can also athlete can also disseminate that information. So I I do think um those are useful. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much for your report, Danielle. All right, we'll move on now to Communications Committee. Eppi.
Thank you. I have no items for this week.
All right, thank you. Curriculum and Technology, Dan.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dewan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh this evening, we have several items for review uh for which we'll seek board approval on June third. The first two items were presented to the board as informational items at the April twenty ninth work session public board meeting. So these items are here on this agenda uh following the thirty day public review period. Um so next week, we'll seek approval from the board for those two items versus the revised professional development induction plan for twenty four, twenty five school year and the second is the K twelve school counseling plan for twenty four through twenty eight. Item number three is a review about place services and tuition costs for extended school year for summer twenty twenty four. The board sees this item annually at this time of year. Item number four is the annual review of an agreement with the M C I U to administer our district's um access um program for Medicaid reimbursement for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Item number five is a review of a service agreement that we're seeking with Mile to Consulting. This um agreement is going to is intended to support our district's effort to increase our Medicaid access reimburse reimbursement program. Item six includes a summary table of the district's uh software maintenance and supporter agreements. These are annual subscriptions and service costs to continue the use of various software programs and services in our district. Item seven is a review of the district's plan to purchase laptop re- replace replacement devices. Um the sixth grade laptops are on a three-year replacement plan and the ninth grade laptops are on a four-year replacement plan. The the costs that you see here includes uh warranty and accidental damage coverage for the devices. Item eight is a review of the district's plan to purchase replacement projectors that are outdated um and old and need to be replaced. Um item nine is a review of the district's plan for purchasing replacement servers. The three servers that are listed in this item are the primary physical servers for our district. Item ten is a review of the district's plan to replace tablets and tablet cases for our libraries. Item eleven is a review of the district's plan to award a bid for the purchase of surplus computers and equipment. So this is revenue coming into the district. Item twelve is a review of the district's request to run high school courses that are currently identified as low enrollment courses for next year. These are courses that are currently showing fewer than twenty students in the course. Um this is an annual process as well. Um we will typically seek the board's approval to run the courses, um understanding that the number of students in these courses right now are um pending finalization of the the master schedule for the high school. Once alternate student requests are identified, these courses will likely increase some, most of them will likely increase in enrollment. So the chart is listed there um explaining the courses as well as our rationale for requesting the courses to be run with lower enrollment. Item thirteen includes a review of students who were tuition waived for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh these are all in accordance with what's permissible in our board policies, but our procedure is always to seek board approval at this time of year. And um item fourteen is a review of an extended field trip for the Wissahickin High School Robotics Team. Uh are there any questions from the board at this time? Thank you.
I actually do have a question. Sorry, I I wanted to stop talking, but so I'm I every year I'm troubled by this because um you know, fifteen point twelve. Um like I get we don't want to, you know, take away anything, but when we're falling under threat, okay, let's take English language learners away because that that shouldn't even be counted because we need to do that. But once we get below thresholds of ten, it just it gets harder and harder to kind of justify these things. And I just, I don't know what the solve is, but I do I do struggle with this because it is a cost, right? And you know, it's also like showing a dwindling of interest. So I just I don't have a solve right now. I just am pausing because it troubles me every year we look at this. Especially with those smaller numbers like under ten, it like for me, it it gets harder and harder to justify. I don't know.
Well, and especially when we have elementary school classes with twenty six and twenty seven kids though. That's a, you know, that's a hard, that's a hard sell for me. Do I want these classes? Of course I do. But I'd also love to not have my kids have twenty six kids in their class. That would be great. It's very, it's a very large class. So that's that's my struggle in seeing those numbers a little bit.
Thank, thank you for sharing your thoughts, though. Um I appreciate the commentary. And I'm open to additional conversations should you'd like to sit down and review the courses and question. I'd be happy to sit down with you to review um it those individual cases. And I appreciate your recognition of um not specifically the E L D courses. That's it. That is special circumstances, absolutely. Yeah, but but we're, our board policy is to request approval, so so they are there for that reason. But certainly, if you'd like to have additional dialogue, I'm open to that between now and next Monday when the board is going to be uh will be seeking board approval. Thank you.
One one additional uh follow up comment related to that. Um so the the student counts that are listed here are students as of uh May sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Is that um that could project an enrollment for these courses in the fall as of May sixteenth? Is that correct?
That's correct. And once um students who have alternate requests are assigned. So some students' first choice requests won't be filled because the course is maxed out, for example. So they may have an alternate course that's among the list of courses here. So many of these courses are likely to increase in number. Um does that answer your question, Mr. Antonio?
Yes, um but so in as a follow up to that, at what point in the next school year will enrollment in these classes um basically settle out, like whatever add drop type period um kind of works its way through? It would it be like by like the fourth week of school or something like that? It was more of a reasonable um I guess more stable period of what we expect the final enrollment for the course to be? I mean, that might, I mean, basically, I want to understand, like, there's some reference here that because there's so many of a number of the courses have a lot of alternates listed that the actual enrollment come next school year could act could be much higher and above twenty for a lot of these courses. What I would like to see is some kind of follow up in sometime in September or October, whenever is the appropriate time when enrollment settles down um to get an actual count of where these um uh courses ended out. So we could do a comparison of we thought there were going to be low enrollment at these levels back in May. And then based on actual enrollment, how did it pan out? Did any of these actually like end up above twenty, which is good? Like we're hoping because of the alternates. Did any stay where they are or actually end up even lower? Um I think that would be interesting just to uh give us an awareness of um how these courses actually do settle out.
Let's do that. Uh I say I'd offer up a suggestion, the midpoint of the first uh market period, that gives up the beginning of the year dust to settle. I'm not sure exactly when that lands, but as a arbitrary date.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so if we can make a note for that or uh whatever, the appropriate board meeting uh more curriculum committee meeting uh
Yeah.
um in the early part of the school year. Um I mean, obviously, I I've been sort of a a squeaky wheel in this thing at this point for many years. But what I will say and 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 I do, I do, you know, um echo the concerns uh that that Zep and Deanne raised. But what I will say is like my recollection from when I first got on the board, you know, like eight, nine years ago. Um my recollection was that we had more of these classes, the list was longer and the numbers were smaller. So I think I I think over time, what's 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 happened is that we still have the number of low enrollment courses that the administration wants us to run for, you know, di- varying reasons. Um but it seems like the like, again, the list is shorter and the numbers on average are higher. Um Japanese numbers are in double digits uh or I think back then they were actually low single digits. So that's that's a positive with the exception of uh AP Japanese, but um nevertheless, uh it's something we should continue to keep an eye on because it does have real cost implications for the overall digit district budget.
And Dr. Dewan, is there a cutoff, for example, if the S A T prep goes bo- goes to five or less? Is there, is there a cutoff? So if if, for example, S A T prep, which is seven, goes to five, does that mean it's you 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 pull that from the list? Is there, is there a number below which we won't go?
No, so the the numbers here won't decrease. Is that, is that what your question is?
No, no, I'm asking if if they do decrease, do we then say we're not offering that course?
Like, do we have a minimum threshold?
What we bring forward to the board is what our recommendation is based on the information we have and the students who are in need of that course. Um there are cases that the the high school team will have not brought forward on this list because the numbers were too low um from their perspective and they were able to meet the students' needs and other course assignments. So you what you don't see is what the high school team has already weeded out as not something that they would recommend and other pathways for students to meet the needs in their course uh uh course alignment. Does that answer your question? Okay, perfect.
But Steve, I think maybe your your point might have been slightly different in the sense that, say, for example, um uh in early Septe- early September this fall, it turns out that um only two students show up for S A T verbal prep because the other five, for whatever reason, decided to swap out or do something else. Would we continue then to run that class if the actual enrollment was even lower than what we think it is on this list?
Two, the number two would be a pretty hard hard sell, but uh there is not a steadfast number of four, six or two. It's but I think that that we might well be able to meet those two students' needs without having a full class run. Seven is a little different story.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you again for that report. Um we'll move on now to our uh Facilities and Transportation Committee, Jill.
Thank you. There are no informational items this evening and we have um a total of five action items for review tonight and vote next week. I'm going to ask uh Wade um if he can give us a quick uh run through of those, please.
Sure. Thank you very much. Um so the first, we've actually discussed on a couple of different forums. This is the um approval and acceptance of the donation of the outdoor A E Ds uh by the family of Megan Sean O'Donnell in memory of Ryan Weedler. I apologize if I have the pronunciation wrong uh to be located at the multipurpose baseball field valued at one thousand four hundred dollars. And again, we're very appreciative of that. The second is the approval of the award of the Bus Garage Fuel Island Upgrade Project to the lowest responsible bidder meeting, the specifications of Ferguson and McCann uh ink to remove the replace the gasoline and diesel dispensers, hose retractors and ancillary equipment in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Um it's, this is essentially the fuel system. So you, we have underground storage tanks to get it into the buses or vans or whatever. It's that mechanism that we're replacing. And that system is uh twenty five years old and we are uh comfortable with the contractor and comfortable with the price. Um the third item is um replacement of the uh, excuse me, the extension of the proposal for the A T C Control Service Contract. It's for a three-year timeframe. Um, excuse me, for four-year timeframe and we do present these periodically. So again, this won't come up for another four years. Um and uh as we've noted, their their costs are increasing. Uh but we do believe that this is the best uh option that we have. Um item four, we had discussed at the last meeting, probably at a facilities meeting before that. We had additional um beyond what we had thought unsuitable soils and this is a change order for sixty one thousand dollars to E R Stupner, who's the general contractor at the Blue Bell Project. Um I think it was Zeffy at the last meeting asked whether or not we are um under budget and on time. And we are under budget and on time. Um so this is um uh, you know, something that we don't prefer to bring to the board, but it is uh um appropriate based on the level of unsuitable soils that we had. And the last item is the approval of the proposal for Land Concepts Group um for phase two of the development of the Night Road Woodland Project uh that has been discussed at facility meetings, I think also a presentation at a board meeting. Um so it's additional money to see this project through to the next steps.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions about any of those?
I have a question about uh, well, first of all, I'm so happy to see the land concepts on there for the woodland. So this is for the next plan, not for mm mm a step, just getting the plan solidified and a final approval cost. Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, it's the costs to hopefully get it approved to the board and done.
Got it. How long after approval could they do it? I'm just curious.
You mean, how long do we think construction will take?
Yeah.
I I don't know. That may be in the proposal. I'll take a look.
Okay. And then my other question is not on the list, but where are we with the bus cameras? I I think I had asked this before, but I was, I wasn't sure what you had said.
So um the the camera's on the side of the buses. Is that what you're asking? Okay, um Whit Payne has approved and I have a copy of their intergovernmental agreement. We're waiting for um Ambler and Lower Gwinnett. Uh Chief Kenny noted that he thought it was going to be sort of a short timeframe till we get that. Uh when I either get Lower Gwinnett or get a uh uh some type of information from him that they're very confident that is going to a pre- uh uh pass, um I would sign the Bus Patrol uh agreement that we have with them. Um and I don't want to sign that until I'm very confident that the, you know, uh largest municipalities would be on board. Uh so at that point, then it's a matter of time for the a setup of the cameras on the side of the buses to be installed. Bus Patrol already has a contract uh with for students, so there should be no uh problem with that. It's just going to be time and how many um different school districts are in line before we are. Um had all that come together, maybe three weeks ago, we were pretty comfortable saying that that would happen over the summer. As time slips by a little bit, it could still be the summer or might be into the fall.
And have you heard from Chief Bartowski at all in Ambler?
Uh we we've had discussion. I don't have any permanent, uh excuse me, fixed sort of timeframe for that yet.
Okay, is there something we could do to help the police departments along with getting those agreements or just them sort of approving it and reviewing it?
I think it's just paperwork and lawyers and politics and government.
Yes. Okay. The frustrating, slow part of everything. Thank you, Wade.
Yep.
Anything else or any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much for that report.
Thanks.
The Finance Committee.
All right, uh we have twelve items uh for review for vote next week and I'll go through them and Wade will correct me where I'm incorrect. Um the couple are just our normal uh monthly processes, the finance report seventeen point one and the list of payments seventeen point twelve. And it looks like some annual items seventeen point two is agreement for uh payment of insurance premiums for three hundred and sixty one thousand three hundred and forty five dollars. Seventeen point three is the North Monaco Tech Center twenty four, twenty five budget of which uh Wissahickin Share is one million thirty five thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars. Um which is the the smallest percentage of that Monaco budget. Um the seventeen point six is the Monaco I U uh cooperative purchasing uh agreement of fifty eight thousand. Uh seventeen point eight uh is important and that's the general fund uh transferred to the capital reserve of uh three million nine hundred and forty one thousand thirty eight dollars. Uh seventeen point nine is our uh variety of commitment of fund balances. Uh seventeen point ten is our annual membership to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Uh seventeen eleven is approval of our board doc subscription, which hopefully both uh us and the public use regularly. New items are rental fields, uh uh rental fees for the turf fields at seventeen point four. Seventeen point five is to waive those rental fees for the J K Sports Summer Camp this summer. And then seventeen point seven is a a donation of a Red Cat voice amplifier for Stony Creek. Wade, how'd I do?
Very, very well. Thank you.
Any question?
Well, thank you so much. All right, Women's Policy Committee, Marshall.
Thank you. I have no informational or action items.
Great. Thank you. Rachel, the Party Oversight Committee, Paul.
Thanks, Amy. We have no items for the seat.
All right, thank you. Health, wellness and safety, Rosetta.
Thanks, Amy. There's no informational items and no action items.
All right.
All right. Yeah, tomorrow, we're meeting with students. Yeah. Yeah, so that's tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, so student meeting. Yeah, who, who's planning to attend tomorrow? Awesome. And then we also have the civics meeting after that, whoever can attend. Okay, great. All right, um, then we have our report of board representatives. Extracurricular, Marshall.
I have nothing to report this evening.
MCIU, I don't have a report for that either. North Monaco?
So there were celebrations for award winners who met national standards for North Monaco. And there was also an interesting presentation by Diversity Council representatives. And Diversity Council manages, I guess, student groups across all of North Monaco and the three different sessions.
Yeah, I, I thought it was really interesting, cuz it's student-led initiatives and it's peer-to-peer efforts that they do. And it seems like it's doing really, really well there. So maybe, you know, they could steal some of their good ideas. Other things that, you know, they, they shared with us was there was twenty-one students with students who received an exceeds, a meets or exceeds expectations on their NOKD scores. And for these technical schools, a NOKD is like how proficient they are in their skill. So it was twenty-one of our students. So I thought that was pretty impressive, and it was the whole gamut, like from cosmetology to welding. So and everything in between. And then June fourth, they're having their, their senior recognition ceremony. And one thing that I'm so very excited about is next year, and I'm gonna get this wrong, is it the biotech or the health sciences?
Sciences.
Health sciences, they're redoing the health sci- because they're so similar, I, I get them confused. The health sciences is coming back because we had it, and during COVID, it stopped. And now I believe they're going with Jefferson instead of when it, whatever, they're going with Jefferson and ten, ten WIS kids are going into program. Very exciting stuff. Yeah, that's it.
Great, we're forward. Thank you. Any comments or questions? No? All right, well, thank you. ERC?
Yes, ERC and PSBA. I'm on summer break now, so. Go on fishing.
All right, thank you. All right, well, now we're at our second public comment period. No one in person again, but we do have two online. Okay, um, let me go over the rules again. Can we allow a maximum of five speakers on any particular topic? This is the second comment period, so it could be on any school-related topic. Limit comments to three minutes. It's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on board docs. When speaking, please state your name and municipality of residence, as well as the topic upon which you're speaking. Who's first, Katie?
We're gonna try SS again.
Okay, SS, you can go ahead and unmute. That's talking in the corner, right?
SS, if you can unmute, you have permission to speak. Their microphone is unmuted, but we don't hear anything right now.
Okay, who's the other speaker?
Sure, it's Carmina Taylor.
Okay, Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
And I'm advocating for that person. She can't, she's saying that she's being taken off. She's saying that she's being taken off of the ability to speak, the person previously. And now this person is calling me. Hold, I don't know. Katie, do you know what's going on, why she can't speak? Selena, are you there? Hello? Katie, she's still having difficulty speaking.
Carmina, we've asked her to unmute herself. That's the best speaking to on our end. She says to unmute herself.
All right, well, she's saying it's not working. All right, I'm gonna mute, put my, I'm gonna unmute myself, or Katie, and can you try it one more time?
Yes, I will try it one more time. SS, you have permission to talk.
Hi, how are you? Are, are you guys able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Saida Salas. My municipality is Wit Payne Township. I would like to address the bullying in the district on the elementary level. My son is being bullied for being neurodivergent. He has experienced a lack of support from the principal Stephanie Washam and also the student service director Kelly McCloskey. He was bullied by students and then by the very people he trusts. He was falsely imprisoned and, as he stated, barricaded by Kelly, Haime, McCloskey, Stephanie Washam, and another staff.
So we can't have you name specific people by name directly over, you can write us an email with names of specific employees, but we can't have you name them specifically.
Okay, thank you. He had never seen this woman prior to that day. He was mortified, and as he stated, barricaded, and he is neurodivergent in his anxiety. The staff did not take any of this into consideration, as they also neglected to find him in need of an IEP, resulting in a settlement of ten thousand dollars, which could have been avoided had they shown.
We also can't have you talk about confidential settlements during a public comment either.
Well, the, okay, no problem. It just said it was on the agenda as number ten, as number, um, ten, but I'll move over. All right, compassion and non-bias. I have been further bullied for advocating for my son, resulting in a no trespassing order. And Mister, the, the student, the actual superintendent, has not made himself available to, to lift that for my son. Promotion for his field day that is coming up, which will impact him greatly. The staff, who stated she is uncomfortable and or perceived me to be threatening, oddly enough, has come to my car just two days ago and opposed to having the secretary walk, walk my son outside, which shows the inconsistency that is going on, on the elementary level, and I believe is trickling over to the high schools as well and middle school. The student rep who spoke last, at the last board meeting, on Asad's behalf, at the last meeting stated she has seen this happen and has written and spoke on this yet. We have not had any results due to the lack of numbers of Aboriginal, African-American, and Black students and parents. While the strings program has been put back in place after one bare me, at the one board meeting, when the board stated they value the students' representative voices, I have been asked by parents to come address math support as well as strings. Yet, when I have, when I have a fight, as usual, no one will stand for Black women and Black boys, yet use our voices so readily to assist your cases in every instance. Asad feels alone in a place that should feel like home. The children are longing right now for true belonging, and they are demanding understanding. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you.
There's no more raised hands on Zoom.
All right, then we will move on to board comments. Any of my fellow board members have comments this evening?
For those who are still tracking on earlier school start time, there was a meeting between Raznak and the East Penn Superintendent and school, the school board vice president last week, and I attended that meeting. East Penn is considering changing their secondary start times. They are looking at our resolution as, you know, an additional thing that they might consider. But they actually are facilitating a meeting with Raznak and Representative Schweier. Schwerer, if I'm saying that wrong, he actually sits on the House Education Committee. He's the chair, he's the chair, and he actually is an East Penn representative. So, you know, leveraging every single possibility. So, you know, Raznak is still working hard to kind of get things moving in, in Congress or get that bill the traction it needs. I did have a follow-up question. Jim, I know we had sent some emails over to some folks on our resolution, but as per our statement number two on our resolution, the promise was that we would make this broadly available to all the MCIU schools and to all the, you know, representatives in our, and Montgomery County collective. So I know we had done an initial push, and we were gonna do a secondary push. I don't know if we've kind of completed that work yet and wanted to see how we're doing there.
I'll look into it. Yeah, I don't know if we have that.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to comment, I know this time of year, there's all these events, concerts, plays, musicals. And I've been, I know many of us are parents and have been attending them or just community members attending them, and they've just been so wonderful. I feel like every other night, there's something, and they've just all been so fabulous. And our teachers have just done such an amazing job of putting these together. And it's, I can't believe, like, for these young kids to be putting, putting together these amazing productions. It's just, like, unreal for me. So I just have to compliment our teachers, our students, our parents for bringing our kids to all these rehearsals. It's really, really amazing to see these amazing productions here at the end of the year, and also exhausting. But, but we're almost there. So many things, yes. But yeah, they've all been amazing. So, anyone else? All right, then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.